A big thank you to every school superintendent, teacher, parent and student. Who spoke out against the governor's unconstitutional and dangerous executive order. It's because of your work that he was walked back, has walked back his threats to punish school boards. That are just trying to do right by their kids. I'm so proud to stand with you. Our voices have made a difference and Florida's kids are better for it and safer. As of this morning, there are fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty Floridians hospitalized with COVID-19. Forty-eight point nine percent, almost half of our ICU beds are occupied with COVID patients. If Florida were a country, it would be the second most infected place on the planet. Florida has seen a five hundred and fifty percent increase in COVID cases among children. And five hundred and twenty percent increase in children hospitalized with COVID over the last month. As of last night, there were four hundred and forty students in Palm Beach County. Schools that were quarantined after exposure to COVID, two days within our school day and two days into the school year. And unfortunately, four teachers died of COVID within twenty-four hours this week in Broward County. And our governor said yesterday that we just have to deal with this. Oh, Governor, there wouldn't be so much sickness and hospitalization and death to deal with. If you would just have done your job to protect the people of our state. If you had, if you didn't have, it didn't have to be this way and it didn't have to be this bad. This is a full-blown crisis. And to stand by and watch Florida's children and families suffer without making every possible effort. To help is immoral and unconscionable. We have been sorely lacking leadership. And this is proactively trying to prevent the spread of the virus and keep our kids safe. Preventative medicine is what we need to be focusing on right now. Making sure that people aren't getting into the hospitals is what we need to be really focused on. And so that is also why today, talking about some of the issues that are happening in our schools. I am so honored to have my friend, Dr. Osgood here with me today. I had the opportunity of first meeting Dr. Osgood when I used to represent Broward schools. Back when my other hat was on in the private sector. And so to see what Broward County, what you all have been able to do. Makes me so proud to be from Broward and to have represented you all for all those years. Dr. Osgood is the chair of the Broward County School Board. She has been on the front lines fighting for the rights of our local school boards. To issue mask mandates and to make sure mask requirements to keep our kids safe. The Broward County School Board voted this week to keep their mask requirement in place. Despite Governor DeSantis threatening their salaries and funding. Dr. Osgood, thank you so much for your bravery, for standing up for what is right. And taking the time to talk with us today. So without further ado, Dr. Osgood.
Thank you so much Commissioner Freed and thank you for your continued love and support for our community. You know, I served on the Broward County School Board with some amazing and outstanding women leaders. And eight of us voted to mandate masks because. We really love and care about the people that work in our district, the students that attend schools in Broward County. And we believe that we took a constitutional oath to protect and serve the people that elect us to serve them. We were elected by the local citizenry of Broward County to govern and make policy for the school district. And we take that responsibility extremely serious. We have experienced a lot of threats and intimidations and bullying over the last couple of weeks. And we're willing to take whatever the consequence is to make sure. That another person does not die because we made a decision to put their lives at risk. We've concluded that the lives of the people in Broward County are invaluable. And we all know that there are a large number of people that have not been vaccinated. And we want to encourage them to get vaccinated. We have vaccination sites all across the community. This pandemic is real. As you heard, the statistics that the commissioner gave us when she started. People are dying or people are living as after being impacted with COVID. With lifelong complications that they suffer from. This pandemic will impact you and the people that you love. And as a school board member, I will not ever risk someone's life. In order to comply with any authority that's trying to make me jeopardize people's lives. And when you think about it Commissioner, particularly in Broward County. We have had trauma in an extreme way. On February fourteenth in two thousand eighteen, we lost seventeen people at Madre Starmen Douglas. Fourteen adults, fourteen children and three adults whose lives were taken in a school shooting. We have since responded in the school district with leveling up a lot of safety protocols. We have been given mandates from the governor's office with bills that have passed about certain things that we have to do. To keep children and staff safe in schools. And we have worked very, very aggressively to do that. We went through the end of the school year with bringing students back face-to-face with masks being mandated. We went through a very comprehensive summer program. Where we offer before and after school care with masks being mandated. And we didn't have any type of serious COVID outbreaks. So we have empirical evidence to show us just with the data that we have from our own schools in Broward County. That masks helps us not to have massive spreads and outbreaks of COVID. So I am blown away that this continues to be a discussion, that the threats continue to come. That it's not understood that masks are a tool that we can use to help save people's lives. We've heard the reports from the CDC, from the American Pediatric Association. And a multiplicity of medical professionals. Normally, I'm, I'm a public administrator by trade. I have my masters and doctorate degree in public administration. And in the disciplines of public administration, you have many disciplines, health, education, government, law enforcement. And each discipline has a set of expertise that they bring to the table. And normally when there is a community issue. That is under the preview of a particular discipline that has a body of expertise. You take their guidance and you take their advice. Right now, we're in a time where our governor is just totally ignoring science, you know? Doctors are trained, they are professionals, they're certified, they are the experts. They understand science, they understand the mutation of this deadly pandemic. And they're telling us that we need to protect ourselves, we need to wear masks. I represent a district that is a blended district, primarily African-American, it's an east-west district. African-Americans have continued from the start of COVID. To die at a disproportionate rate because of the other issues of poverty, the lack of access to food. And a state that has still not expanded Medicaid. So when I look at the needs of my constituents. When I read the outcry from public comments and from emails that I receive. When I interact with people in the grocery stores, on the corners in the community as we're trying to get people vaccinated. People are scared, they're concerned about catching this virus. And they're even more concerned about sending their kids and grandchildren to a school environment. Where people are not wearing masks. Broward County Schools employ thirty thousand employees. Many of our hard-working employees have medical conditions. Or they are the sole breadwinner in their house because they have sick family members. Who at home battling with brain cancer, breast cancer and other things. That they can't risk getting infected with COVID and then taking it home and it impacts their whole family. In the last forty-eight hours, we got contacted at the district on Tuesday. That two teachers and an ESP, educational support professional. Had died to COVID who were not vaccinated, three ladies. They had not yet been in school engaging with kids because we start school on Wednesday. But they passed away and now their families are left to deal with the aftermath of not only losing their loved ones. But trying to navigate life in the future without having that individual as a stable part of their family. It's also interesting to me Commissioner Freed, as I've been very prayerfully thinking through this. I don't know of one time that Governor DeSantis or Mr. Cochran has visited Broward County. Has come to this community, to a hospital, to a school. To Sis Trump where is a major part of my district where a lot of African-American people are. Let's face it, I'm a school board member, my race is nonpartisan. I'm here to serve the students in Broward County, no matter what political party their parents are affiliated with. And even when you run in a partisan race, once you are elected. You have an obligation to serve all of your constituents. You don't get to pick and choose who you respond to and who you don't respond to. So I think it's very, very interesting as I look at it through a public administration lens and a policy evaluation lens. That we see these different dynamics taking place. We have resolved that we're going, when I say we, me and the seven other colleagues that feel the way that I feel. We're going to protect the lives of the people in our schools, the students and the hard-working staff, the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers. The teachers, the psychologists, the social workers, we have so many people that are connected to our school system. We have substitute teachers that work part-time, other coaches and stuff that are not full-time in classrooms. But that are navigating throughout the school. We have our district administrators, our principals. We are a large family and we will not take a risk with an outbreak in any of our environments in the school district. Would, that would in turn implement this county in a major way with the school district being the largest employer. So we are standing, we will respond by five o'clock today to the letter that we received from. The Commission of Education, Mr. Cochran, asking us to substantiate our stance and address his concerns. We will respectfully do that because we do respect leadership and people in public office. But at the end of the day, we will vote based on a moral conscience and a decision to protect. The lives of the people that we love and care about.
Thank you, Dr. Osgood. You are certainly an inspiration to school board members across the state of Florida. And certainly the fact that you are standing by your children and the parents in the community, I'd just be so commended. I have a couple of questions that I kind of wanted us to just go back and forth and kind of talk through because. You know, I, I think that people are missing also the other implications of, of this executive order. And other issues that are now, you know, that you guys have to deal with on an everyday basis, not just dealing with masks. You know, so can you tell me again about the, the impact that this is having on our kids in Broward County? I know a lot of kids are scared because I don't want to get sick and some of the younger children may not be fully understand what's going on. So I know as you've talked to parents and probably talked even to children that are about to get back into school. You know, what are some of the, the kind of the feelings that you're seeing on the ground?
Thanks Commissioner. You know, I'm, I'm known by my kids as a millennial that's born in the wrong generation. So I have asked directly to young people how they feel about masks and masks being mandatory. And they'll start off saying, the masks make me uncomfortable, but I don't want to die. You know, I need people to wear masks. I've protected myself with the mask and I, I didn't get sick with COVID. When we think about families, we've received, you know, countless emails from families crying out. To us to protect their children because, you know, one child may have a pre-existing condition. And because we really don't know the potential damage that COVID can do on a child that's under twelve. Those that are twelve and up have an option for vaccination. We don't have the vaccine for children that are younger, so we don't want to risk their lives. We also are dealing with this battle of it being a parent's choice. And when I think about it Commissioner Freed, as a parent right now, I have three adult kids and two grandkids. If I had a rule that smoking cigarettes was allowed in my house, which we don't, we don't smoke cigarettes. But if that was my rule and my parental choice in my house. When my children went to school, they would not be allowed to smoke in school. Because as a parent, I allow them to do it at home. When I put my grandchildren, my wonderful lovable six-year-old Kyla. And my seventeen-month-old grandbaby Gabriel into a car. I have to put Kyla in a seatbelt and I have to put Gabe in a car seat and a seatbelt. As a parent, a grandparent, there is no choice. It is something that I have to do for safety and to protect their lives. So when we think about parental choice or any of our choices, I have the right right now to swing my arm. As long as your nose is not in the way. My individual right can never take precedent of putting a large number or more people in harm. And in danger for me to, than for me to exercise my individual rights. So our children are traumatized. They went through the MSD tragedy. We had just began to see our way forward from that. The pandemic hit. Data shows us that our kids didn't perform well during the pandemic at home. We saw suicide rates increase. We saw the need for social emotional learning. That it was even greater during those times. Many of our kids struggled. Even our high-performing kids, we saw some losses and some challenges and some struggles. So we know that young people need to be with each other. We know that there's social support and peer support. There's a dynamic because we are all been created to have this sense of belonging, this sense of community. For many of our kids, their school environment is their love, their safe environment. Our teachers and our ESPs and our support staff, they do a tremendous job with helping our kids feel loved and safe in school. So not only physically do we want to protect them from the pandemic. But mentally, we want to put them in the best environment that they can prosper. In our schools, we have psychologists, psychiatrists. Our board has taken the funding that we received through the American Rescue Plan. And we've made sure we will have two nurses in schools. Now there is other money that the governor has received that has not been given to us yet. And that's a whole conversation for another time. I don't understand in the middle of a pandemic. How the governor can withhold monies from school districts that so desperately needed to be able to respond. Even in a more aggressive way in a pandemic. But we're trying to support our staff and our students by keeping them physically safe. And allowing them to be in an environment that's loving and supporting, that's going to help them maintain mental stability as well.
Thank you. You know, I've been hearing from FEA about the, the teacher shortage across the entire state. Can you kind of just tell me what's going on in Broward? Are you seeing a shortage? And even not just shortage of teachers, but also probably a shortage of staff like our janitors and our cafeteria workers. And kind of go through even from the staff perspective and the teachers. What, what about the shortage and then to what you're hearing from them as far as their own safety?
So traditionally, even when we're not in a pandemic, school districts have a teacher shortage. And a lot of it is attributed to the fact that this nation really does not value the profession of teachers. Teachers are on the low-paying scale. We know initially teaching jobs were jobs for women. So this nation has a history of not valuing the work and intellect of women. So the starting salaries of our teachers have increased, but it's still not enough to be an attractive job that you can take care of your family. So even in a normal time, we need substitutes and a large number to cover our classrooms or to meet the needs of students. Now you take that and you add a pandemic to it where people are fearing from their lives. It creates a greater need for teachers. It makes a lot of those teachers who are vested, who show up every day because they love kids. That have twenty, thirty years in the system certainly have a lot to offer. A lot of them are retiring early. They're getting out because they just can't take the risk of coming to a school that's not a safe environment. We also see a major shortage with bus drivers. Again, because of salaries, you know, we just had to fight to get some kind of concept of a living wage in Florida. That will take place ultimately over three or four years while people are living, you know, even working in poverty in our state. And we have not chosen to address that or add, you know, monies to different institutions. That would allow us to give those people more money to pay them. So we are seeing a transition in staff in various levels, especially those people that are at the top level. Because several years ago also, the state went to this pay for performance model of pay. Which we certainly want to measure people based on performance. But what it did is it stuck those people that were tenured at us, it froze them at a certain step. So now there's becoming this big wage disparity in those that have vested decades in school districts. And then you have new persons coming in that are making almost the same level of pay. And it does not allow for equity. It does not allow school boards to really pay and show that we value. Those people that have stuck it out, that's been doing this for a long time. So from an organizational perspective, trying to budget in a way that really supports staff and value all staff. While also simultaneously trying to raise teacher pay and the credibility of teachers that it's valued through their pay. Is a very difficult and challenging situation that school boards across the state manage, especially in, in Florida. We, we're like forty-seventh, we're kind of like almost at the bottom in the way that we pay teachers. But we continue to see these games being played with money and education in Tallahassee. Through this process, the Commission of Education's order also speaks to this HOPE scholarship. And it creates this new term that's called COVID harassment. So if I'm a parent and I want an opt-out for masks. I, I don't, you know, I can bring my kid and if my kids show up without a mask and, you know, we follow the discipline matrix. Then now we can be, you know, accused of being harassing COVID harassers to a kid. Or on the other side, if I'm a parent that, you know, sends my kid to school and because other kids are not wearing masks. I can feel that my child is being bullied because they're wearing masks and I can pull them out and put them in a private school. It was interesting to me Commissioner, because I called several private schools on, on Monday. And many of them, especially the Catholic schools are mandating masks. So it's a tip, when you really look at it, when I think about it, you know, with my lens, I just completed this. Public Leadership Credential Program at Harvard Kennedy School that talked, that really taught me more about evidence-based decision-making. When you look at this from a big picture perspective. What I see is a constant attempt to segregate the public schools by constantly taking resources away. And let me explain that. Many people that live in poverty, minority, in Broward is a minority-majority county. They cannot afford the twenty-two thousand dollar a year, thirty thousand, forty thousand dollar a year. That it would take for a child to get a public education. So they can't get a HOPE scholarship and pull their child out and send them to a private school or an alternative school that's going to cost money. So the public school system is necessary. It is a constitutional right to a free public education. We cannot continue to take the resources away from the public school system. So that the public school system now does not have the resources that it need to deliver the services that it needs. School systems are in the business of education. Right now in Broward County, we want to be left alone with all the threats, all the bullying. We just simply want to do what we are constitutionally supposed to do. And that's to educate our children in a safe learning environment. To have a workplace environment for our staff that they feel comfortable and they feel safe. So that we can do the business that we have been created to do. And that's preparing our kids to succeed in tomorrow's world through educating them that they're able to go to college. Sometimes for technical program, create some type of business, something that they could do, that they could gain economically. While making a difference in the world with a product, a service or idea that they offer us. That's going to help us all live a better quality of life.
Thank you, Dr. Osgood. And just, I want to lump in two questions kind of into one and we're going to be quick on this so that we can get to our reporters. Kind of the, the impact of the executive order. What I'm hearing from other school districts. Is that, you know, kids are being sent home because they're testing positive for, either they're testing positive or they've been exposed, I guess more so on the exposed. And the question is, have you received any directive from the Department of Education of what is the parameters of? When they can come back into school? Do they have to, is it ten days? Is it they've been vaccinated? Is there any kind of framework of when those kids can come back into school? Is there any kind of guidance or protocols? And the second is that I'm also hearing from other school districts and I don't know if you guys have dealt with this yet. But the executive order specifies that school boards are not allowed to mandate virtual schools. And so some counties have been interpreting this, that they're not even able to turn on the cameras. It's all the money that we all spent last year to put cameras into classrooms. That when these kids are being sent home, that they're not, that the school boards are not even allowed to put the cameras on. So that the kids can actually still be listening while they're either sick or quarantining. And I don't know if you've had, if you've interpreted the same way or if you are seeing that a workaround. So kind of the two issues, one on protocols to get the kids back into school. And what to do about, you know, again, when they're sent home, being allowed to put on the cameras, which I guess is again. Completely insane that that would not be an option when our kids are sitting home and not being able to learn when the rest of the classroom may be operational.
Yeah, so Palm Beach, which is nearby, had over four hundred plus students that needed to be quarantined two days after opening up. And having masks be optional. I think they had around fifteen hundred, I think. Parents that opted out and didn't send their kids back because of fear of them getting COVID. So the executive rule from the Commission of Education has a lot of ambiguity in it. When it talks about quarantine and other different things because. It also says that you have to practice six weeks of social distancing, which is impossible to do, which is impossible to do. When you bring twenty-seven people into a classroom, you just don't have the physical logistical capacity to do social distancing. So I thought is, is if we have a classroom with a large number of people that need to be quarantining and a teacher. Then we can allow them to do virtual learning in the sense that that teacher is able to work with those students virtually. What we're looking to do is put systems in place that's going to help our students stay engaged in education and help them learn. We did purchase a lot of cameras. We have equipments, computers and things. And we're going to use that as creatively as we possibly can with prioritizing the needs and the education of our children first. I think there are a lot of question and answers going back and forth with those executive or, those executive rules. So that we can get a better understanding. But we have to prioritize our children in this moment. They didn't do so well with just only virtual learning and we have the data to show that. But if they have to quarantine, we have to be able to make sure that their educational needs are being met first. And that we're providing them with supports and environments that can help sustain them and help them do that. It's also a collective bargaining issue, you know, if someone needs to quarantine and we're asking a teacher to do synchronized learning. That is something that we have to go through collective bargaining with our union groups in order to legally be able to do that. And that's why it's interesting that when we get in these crisis times and we decide to do executive orders and executive rules. I don't understand why we don't use collective expertise or adaptive problem solving. Where we get the individuals that are involved around the table and we work through a comprehensive solution. That's going to work for everybody. Miami-Dade County, Palm Beach, they may have different dichotomies that they're dealing with than what I have in Broward. But if there was an opportunity for a superintendent or some group to be collectively engaged with the Commission of Education. Before they just fire off these rules or just respond at the governor's directive. To do something that's going to be punitive to school boards, to staff and to students. It would help us all not to have this whole other level of trauma that we're dealing with now. I believe that we're smart enough to figure this out together. I believe that all of our intellectual knowledge, all of our experiences in the different disciplines, all of our life experiences. If we came together, we could be able to move forward in a way that's going to allow our children to have quality education with the support services that they need. Allow our staff to work in a safe environment that they feel comfortable. But all of the executive rules, all of the back and forth, all of the ambiguity. But all of the executive rules, all of the back and forth, all of the ambiguity, it just creates another level of chaos that we don't need while we're already dealing with a deadly pandemic.
And I could not agree with you more, Dr. Osgood. Unfortunately, the executive order, once again, it created chaos in our state and our educational system. Because again, just to kind of reiterate what I'm hearing, especially from Palm Beach County, is how they're, that there is no, there is no kind of guidance on when you have kids that have been sent home from quarantining, when they can come back into the classroom, what is the guidelines? Again, is it 10 days? Is it them testing negative? Is it less days if they've been vaccinated? So there is no guidance. And so certainly the commissioner needs to put out some additional guidance on what that looks like. And then, and then two, again, and I'm glad that you all are interpreting the executive order that, you know, virtual schools and utilizing the cameras. But I guess that needs to have clarification too, that if in fact we've got a classroom or kids that are quarantining at home, why waste those resources and not allow the teachers to turn on the cameras? I mean, we invested so much money last year in these cameras in the classrooms, and now our kids are staying home. What else? And they're quarantining. They're not even necessarily sick, but if they have to quarantine, why should they not be allowed to still participate at some capacity, even if it's just listening to the classroom because we don't want to, you know, because again, that order is very vague and it says you're not allowed to virtual, which again, is doesn't, it creates confusion and chaos in our state when children are being sent home. And then, of course, the economic impact that we're also forgetting is that when our children are sent home to quarantine, that is a direct impact on their parents who either have to figure out daycare or they themselves have to stay home and not go to work. So the kind of the trickle-down economics and confusion and chaos that's being caused by this executive order is putting a real burden on our school boards, once again, to figure out how to interpret it and how to make sure that they are at least complying as much as possible with the executive order. So Dr. Osgood, thank you again for your time today, and we will turn it over for some questions.
Thank you, Commissioner and Dr. Osgood. For reporters on the line, if you have questions, please type your questions into the chat box at this time. Or if you'd like to ask your question, please indicate that and you will be recognized.
You know, Commissioner, while we're waiting for that, I just want to add, when these decisions are made too, they oftentimes ignore our union groups. Our union groups are very important to the work that we do. We have them in place. I'm a supporter of unions, you know, as an African-American woman. We always have to have groups that are advocating. But some of these decisions have to be collectively bargained in order for districts to implement them. But this particular administration don't really care for our union groups. So they just tend, they just tend to ignore them like they do the residents in Broward County.
Our first question comes from Jake Stofan at Capital New Service, who has a couple of questions. Jake, go ahead.
Hey, sorry, these are kind of long-winded, so it would take a long time to type them out. So first of all, I was just hoping for some clarity on how exactly the governor or the Department of Education backtracked on their threat. You know, I'm looking at the letter that came directly to the Leon County school board here, which was identical to the one that went to Alachua, and I imagine the one that went to Broward as well. Depending on the facts presented, I may recommend to the State Board of Education that the department withhold funds in an amount equal to the salaries for the superintendent and all of the school board members. That seems to be the case still. I'm just a little confused as to what changed here.
So what they're saying now is they found out legally that they don't control the payroll of school districts. So they can't per se withhold the paychecks of school board members. But if they withhold funds that we have to take from our general fund, I think I saw something to say that they will withhold the funds that we have to take from our general funds and then in good faith, not to take resources away from the students, that school board members who chose to protect the people that they love in good faith would not pay themselves. So now you're taking the love that I have for my students and the people that work in my district, and you're using it against me to say, okay, if you love them so much, then give up your salary because I'm going to take this money from over here and you're going to have less money to use to support students and to provide quality education opportunities. So if you really care that much, then you'll give up your salary in order to make that happen. We should not have our children being used as pawns in the midst of this fiasco that the governor has going on. We are already underfunded in education. Any concept of taking funds away from education is wrong. And why should people work and not be paid? You know, I have major issues with that as an African-American woman where my people worked for hundreds of years and was never paid. Any thought of somebody thinking that people should work and not be paid is just totally unacceptable.
Yeah, and you know, that was my understanding from the jump when this letter first came out, that that's how it was going to work, and it seemed like it was done by design. And, you know, as a follow-up here, I mean, are you prepared to give up your salary so you don't have to take resources away from other parts of your budget?
Well, I've been very, very open about that. If the governor decides to take our salaries and not allow us to have those salaries, the people in my communities, their lives are invaluable. So I'm not going to put a limit. And I'm not, I'm also not going to be forced into this perspective of parochial self-interest where I'm put in a position to make it look like I'm choosing myself over the people that I love. That's in direct opposition of what public service is. I personally am prepared, if the governor goes that route to take our salaries, to give up my salary. I trust my community. My community has come together and cared for and loved each other and fed each other and taken care of each other throughout this whole pandemic and other very, very critical times that we've had. So I'm sure that somebody in my community will make sure that I eat, somebody will give me somewhere to stay if I need somewhere to stay.
I have extra bedrooms up here.
I haven't always, you know, been where I am today. 32 years ago, I lived homeless battling with addiction. So I know what it is to struggle. I don't have a problem if I have to eat a peanut butter and jelly sandwich, a sodas and crackers. You know, in my community, in our context, we have a sense of family. So we'll share a pot of collard greens. We'll share, you know, some cornbread with each other to make sure that everybody has something to eat. What's most important to me is protecting people from getting infected with this deadly pandemic. I would like to ask the governor to help me get vaccines back at our churches so that we can get some of these people vaccinated. If I could just get them to work with me to help my community, I think we wouldn't even have to have this mass conversation at this time because we would have more people vaccinated.
And I think on that note, Jake, too, a couple of things. One is that, and Dr. Osgood, that is some of the things that we were talking about, the White House is bringing down more vaccination locations, especially in our Black communities and some other minority communities that we're not seeing the same percentages of vaccination rates. And two is the White House has said that they will, you know, both publicly and behind closed doors, that they are going to be working with us, that if the governor follows through on that threat, which I believe is unconstitutional, that there will be backup. And I don't know if you all saw that Alachua County, the Board of County Commissioners, I don't know if it was yesterday or first thing this morning, the county commissioners have said that they will supplement the school board's budget if in fact that is what happens too. So there is a lot of people out there who are going to get the backs of our school board members and our superintendents if the governor at any point follows through with this unconstitutional threat.
Thank you. Our next question comes from Teresa Marsonberg at the Florida Channel. Where is the board on plans for legal action? Dr. Osgood, I believe that's directed to you.
Certainly. So we instructed our attorney to reach out to outside counsel to see how we can move forward to take legal action, and we're still in that process. We believe that we are being true to the oath we took in the Constitution. We believe that the governor has usurped his constitutional rights and ignored local authority. We think that we have a good legal argument. We have been in conversations with the NAACP in the Southern Poverty Law School. So we are aggressively moving forward in that venue as well.
Thank you. Reporters, if you have other questions, please type them into the chat box or type that you have a question to be recognized by voice before we go back to Jake Stofan for a follow-up. Okay, Jake, go ahead with your questions while we wait for additional questions.
I guess I'm the only one who has questions at all these press conferences. I guess that's a good thing. So my next question is, there's been rulings in Arkansas that have temporarily blocked a law that, you know, is kind of in line with what the governor's executive order did, you know, preventing local officials from implementing mask mandates. There's also been two court rulings in Texas, both, you know, at the lower court level. So all these things are probably going to be appealed, but I was just curious for your reaction on the outcome of those cases, especially with the suit brought by parents getting its first hearing later this afternoon.
I'll take this. You know, I think what you're seeing across the country is exactly what you saw here in our state, is that you are seeing this very radical right leadership across our country that are not, are so outside of the box of normality that the people of our country, regardless of partisan politics, are saying, wait a second, you all have taken this radical perspective a little bit too far and are suing and saying this, we're all in this together. The impacts of not leading and what we're seeing here in the state of not showing any leadership is having an impact on people's lives in the communities and our businesses. We know, I mean, just look at how many people are, you know, don't, we have vacancies in the school board. We have vacancies all over the state, and our small businesses are starting to see the impacts when their employees are testing positive or having to quarantine and they're having to close their small businesses. And so these types of lawsuits, especially the one here, and I know some of the parents, that the ones especially in Palm Beach County that are part of this lawsuit, because they're done, they're fed up with this dictatorship that is coming from this governor and from, you know, the right, you know, the radical right in our country. And this has to stop. And the people are standing up to it, and they're fighting back, and they're winning. The people of our country are winning. And they're wanting their leaders to start protecting them. And we will continue to see those types of lawsuits popping up across the country until these governors start understanding that the people need to be more important than their political future and their careers. They have a job to do, and that's to protect the people of their states. And they are falling far behind on that responsibility.
And the last one for me here. So looking at the data that the Department of Health put out, Broward ranked fourth for the highest case rates among students last year with about a little over 70 cases per 1,000 students. Obviously, they had a mask mandate, as did the other top three case rate counties, Indian River, Dade, and Jefferson. Just curious for your reaction on why you think that is? I mean, overall, no mandate. Districts did have about a 5% higher case rate. But those are the numbers the governor's looking at when he says that mandates don't really make too much of a difference.
Well, kids live outside of the schools too. So you have things that are going on in the community that impacts the kids. We haven't found that people are contracting the virus when they wear masks inside the school. In most cases, it's because kids go out with their families, they do different things outside the school. But what we do know is that when you're in a small classroom environment and you're on a school bus and you're not wearing a mask and there's an airborne disease like this pandemic is, you have more exposure. The more people breathing, the more people talking, the more people not wearing masks in those closed environments gives you a greater opportunity to catch the virus. We also know that today we have something called the Delta variant, which science says is stronger and more deadly than the previous variants that we have. So who wants to risk somebody's life? I'm certainly not.
And I think, Jake, to that question too, is that we also know that last year the, we didn't have as much spreading. You know, we know that the Delta variant is more contagious, which, so it is, it is a completely different metrics to be looking at the numbers today than we did this time last year. It's a different matrix because of how contagious it is. And the other thing that we also have to look at is that we also have another tool, which is the vaccinations. And so we need to be utilizing this tool, which is different than it was last year, encouraging people to get vaccinated. And that is the only way that we're really going to get in front of it. But especially for our kids that are 11 and under that don't have that option, the only way, only thing that we have to really help with this vulnerable population is masks. So it just, it doesn't make any sense why we're not doing everything possible to protect our kids. That needs to be the first priority. Because if we don't get our kids back into school and we don't have protective measures, you know, the trickle-down, again, impact on our economy and livelihoods of so many people is drastic. So this has to be something that we as a community are all in together. You know, and of course, allowing every school district to make decisions what's best for their community. You know, Dr. Osgood knows what's best for Broward. Other superintendents and other school board members know what's best for Lee County and for Polk County. And every county is a little bit different. But I think it goes back to the fundamentals that we need to empower our local school boards and our local elected officials to do what is right for their community. This is not a third-world country. This is not a dictator, you know, we operate in democracy. And these electeds were elected by the people. And we always are taught in a conservative measure is that we have to rely on the government that's closest to the people. And that is unfortunately not what the governor is doing here and continue to ask him to reverse course on this and let our local electeds do what they are charged by statute, by constitution to do, and that's protect their communities. And frankly, I don't know if that was the last one or if there was others.
That was our last question, Commissioner. That is unfortunately all the time that we have. If you have any closing remarks, please go ahead.
No, I just wanted to, again, thank Dr. Osgood for being on here today and all of our school board members and our superintendents that are standing up for what is best for their communities. And of course, thank you to our parents and to our teachers who also stood in unison on fighting these issues. We've got your back. We will continue to stand with you. We will get through this together and making sure that we are doing everything we can to protect ourselves. If you haven't been vaccinated, go get vaccinated. Go talk to people in the community who have been sick because they weren't vaccinated and hear their stories. Because I'm hearing them all day long, that people who have gotten really sick, who have family members who are inside of the hospitals that are now wishing that they had been vaccinated. So tell those stories, stand up. We will get through this together. And thank you again, Dr. Osgood, and to the school board members of Broward County for doing what is right for that community.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. That concludes today's press conference. Please know that a replay of this press conference will be available on our Facebook page at facebook.com/fdax. Journalists, if you have additional questions as follow-up, please email them to comms@fdax.gov. Thank you and have a good day.